Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley.
Here.
Mrs. Tuhha.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mr. Lauko.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Means.
Here.
Mr. Molesky.
Here.
Thank you. Before we move on to Agenda Item Number Four, a brief mention on the passing of Chris Reho, city employee, within the last week or so, a very valuable asset to the city. And I've asked Paul just to say a little bit about what he did and the kind of person that Chris was.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Chris Reho passed away last week, as Mayor mentioned. He was a 29-year employee for the city. He worked in our lab laboratory in the wastewater building. He was our technician, so he was the lead lab individual there. He is basically the individual who was responsible for making sure that we had safe drinking water, sampling our discharge into the watershed from the wastewater treatment plant. And he was excellent at what he did. His passing was a surprise to all, and he will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else have any comments on Chris Reho?
Yeah, I would just add that it was unexpected, and he was a great asset. He very much took to heart his job. He loved what he did and was very, very protective of our water, which is what you want from somebody in that position. So it's a sad course of events.
Thank you. And in memory of Chris, we're just going to take a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for the regular session on January 12th?
Please passage.
Even seconded discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley.
Yes.
Mrs. Tuhha.
Yes.
Mr. Grau.
Yes.
Mr. Lauko.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Means.
Yes.
Mr. Molesky.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the January 26th special joint session minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Tuhha.
Yes.
Mr. Grau.
Yes.
Mr. Lauko.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Means.
Yes.
Mr. Molesky.
Yes.
Mr. Blackley.
Amy, thank you for your diligence on having that special joint session minutes ready to go for tonight. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Manager's Report. Randy?
Yes, thank you and good evening. The first three points tonight are about grants. First one is Nawaka provided a status update on their EV charging station program. This project was not able to be awarded in November due to the fact that the bids were 20% higher than their engineer's estimate. They are refining their request for proposal, the RFP, and they plan to rebid the project in February. The awarded contract would then have to go to their Board of Directors for approval in June, with project implementation tentatively scheduled for the summer with completion by year end. And if you recall, this is for a fast charger down at the new trailhead on Park. And that's 100% Nawaka-funded. No city funds us that. Second point is the systemic safety funding application was submitted to ODOT for the pedestrian safety in the Chardon Square area and the Chardon High School area, specifically by the parking lot across to the high school. The application is for the installation of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, RRFDs, curb bumpouts, high-visibility crosswalks, and improved signage. If awarded, this grant will cover 90% of the construction cost, with the local share being about 20% of the project cost, which is estimated around $115,000. Total project cost is $579,983. Currently, this project is not in the capital improvement plan for the 2023-2027 years. If awarded, we'll have to add it to the 2024-2028 CIP and make revisions. Additional funding has been provided to... Additional information has been provided to the Ohio Department of Development's Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant Program. If you recall, in 2021, the city was not successful in securing grants through this program. However, they've opened it up and looked for updated information. We gave them the information on the Clearwell Water Tank Number Two and the Hidden Glen Waterline Loop Project. Currently, the waterline project is scheduled to be constructed next year in '24, and the Clearwell Water Tank Number Two engineered in '26 and constructed in '27. And that is predicated on grant funding. Due to the cost of the Clearwell Water Tank, the current water operating fees, and the water capital improvement fee will not support the expense of that project, so we need to get the grant. Moving on to projects. The Chardon Living Memorial Park Phase Two, the CXD flush toilet restroom was set into place in January 17th and is nearing its completion right now to be hooked up and ready to go. The Center Street Sidewalk Infill Project, city engineers told me you have some information you'd like to share.
We finished off the LPA requirements review form for ODOT and sent that back. The first time we submitted it, they had several comments, so we took care of those comments, sent it back with some additional information. That seems to be the last piece of the puzzle for that project, so as soon as they sign off on that, we should be able to get moving on and get that project advertised.
Thank you, Doug. The Hidden Glen Water Main Loop that I just mentioned about the grant possibility. Staff met with the Hidden Glen Associates and discussed the project and potential for funding scenarios. Law Director Chinaki is preparing a revised agreement for their consideration and then back to the city, so we're moving forward with that. Seventh Avenue Repair Widening Extension Project, no update right now. The Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Wetland Restoration Project. A project coordination meeting was held January 19th, and the 30% drawings were reviewed. Those were head comments back and forth, and they're continuing to work on them. We expect 60% drawings to be completed this month. The Allen Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, no update. That's the end of my report for this evening.
Randy, what do they mean by 30% drawings were reviewed? Is there not a... Explain that if you can.
It's as they do the design, working through what's going to happen on the site. It's where at this point of the design build and then putting more and more and more in. Can you explain it better?
It's a checkpoint for the city to check how the design is progressing and see if they want to change anything before they get too far along in the planning development.
Doug, were you involved with that?
I was, yes.
You were, okay. Okay, very good. Are there any questions for Randy?
Randy, on the safety grant, do we know when that would maybe be awarded by?
I believe it was late summer, the time when we heard that we did not get it. And with that particular project, we're trying to coordinate that with the State Root Resurfacing Project, so that different entities are trying to work together to see if we do get the funding, that'll be done when the State Root comes through, rather than doing it a year after and having to tear up some of the stuff they've just done.
Anything else for Randy? Okay, thank you, Randy. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission met in regular session on January 17th. We had one major item on the agenda. That was the construction or addition of a 35,000-square-foot building, 310 industrial park. And this, as you will recall, the last council meeting, we had waived the requirement for sidewalk for this property. There were five variances were granted to this, most of which were, I think, very minor in nature. And it sort of also stemmed from the fact that due to the nature of the business conducted there, there are some security concerns. And the Planning Commission felt that these variances were legitimate for both that reason and also in keeping with the character of the industrial neighborhood in which the building is located. So those variances were granted, and we thank Mr. Landy's for his continued faith in our city. Under other business, we had an informal discussion with a gentleman looking to convert an existing commercial building, which you... Most people will be familiar with, at the corner of Court and Washington Street. This is currently... It was a house built in the early 20th century, two-story framed dwelling that is currently being used as an accountant's office, as a parking lot in the back. This gentleman would like to convert it back into a residence. So we had quite some discussion about that, the concept of either rezoning it once back again to residential or keeping it commercial. There wasn't any inclusion, other than the Planning Commission was reluctant to consider rezoning. Steve, is anything else new on that?
Since then, I think he's moved on from that house. They... By code, they could convert the second floor to residential. And I think they might... I believe they're going to take the property off the market and do that and maybe rent the upstairs.
You mean the sellers?
Yeah, the current owners of the building, and the accountant's office would stay on the first floor.
Right, so the current owners and their real estate agent also has happened to be at the meeting, so lend to a lively discussion.
Yeah.
And then finally, we had Leon Sampat with LS Architects proposing a very interesting new project for a Congregate Care Seniors Center on Medallin's Drive, just south of Walmart, on the empty lot behind the bank. How many units was that going to build, do you remember? Is it 100-something?
They had 120. Whether that's... That was their preliminary shot. I don't know if they're going to be able to fit that many, but that was what they were proposing.
These are going to be senior-only type units, rental, a similar... Very similar concept to...
Redwood.
Redwood, yeah, so. And that was just an informal discussion. The Planning Commission, I think, we generally liked it, and I think they're going to proceed with that. The other item on our business that evening, we... The Planning Commission's regular meeting date has now changed to the fourth Tuesday every month. So just put that on your calendar. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Andy. Are there any questions for Andy? Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Council Committee Reports. We have a presentation safety tonight. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Safety Committee met on Tuesday, January 31st. Councilman Lauko and I were in attendance, along with several members of our city staff. We talked about the... City manager gave an update on the systemic safety grant, which we've already discussed. Chief Neas provided information on the tabletop exercise that was held on Saturday, January 28th. This training exercise is part of the city's emergency operation plan. Chief, would you like to give us kind of a summary of how that... What that was and how it went?
Sure. On the 28th, we met. We went through an exercise to go through our city's emergency operation plan. To best of my knowledge, it's not been done before. We worked with the Jogga County Emergency Services. Tom Vensel put together a facilitated tabletop, working closely with the fire department to develop a scenario. And then city staff, members of what's known in the plan as the emergency core team, were presented with a problem involving a traffic accident in town with a tanker truck with a hazardous material spill. So we worked our way through what that would look like with each of the folks at the table, describing what their role would be and at what time different key activities might happen, where we would draw additional resources from. And so throughout the course of the exercise, it drove conversation. It also caused us to recognize some things that we needed to follow up and address in the plan and to update our plan, as well as develop relationships between us and the key players that might be in that room in the event of an emergency. So overall, I think it was a pretty successful tabletop, and I look forward to doing it again in the future.
Okay. Mayor, did you have anything? Because you had made some comments about the exercise you experienced being there, too.
It was fantastic. All participants. I know I learned a great deal. And we did follow the emergency operations plan, and were able to make slight corrections in that plan based on this exercise. So listening to the advice from Course Chief and Justin Geis, the fire chief was also in attendance, and the county, and there's a state rep there as well.
Horizon.
And so did you describe where the accident that was the example was? At Center and Cherry. So that was an interesting location, but it just happened to be coming by there about four days ago. And I'm coming down the street, and there's a truck pulled over with police in attendance at that exact intersection. So there was nothing being spilled, but I know that it just kind of caught me off guard that that was the location. But no, they did a terrific job, and I'm very pleased with it. Another one in a year or so would not be a bad idea.
Doug, you submitted some changes to the actual manual itself. Are there any other changes that are coming from anyone to be submitted to the emergency?
That's a great question. And based on the discussion on the public information officer that would be appointed, should be appointed prior to any emergency, but we need some assistance with templates and information on how best to handle the appointment and/or the administration of a PIO. And Chief, and also the representative from the state and the county referenced that there's training for public information officers. So we're looking into that, and that would probably become an addendum into the current plan. But that was definitely an important issue that we had referenced in the plan, but not to any extent.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, who's doing that? Is that...
I know that Chief, you had referenced, and maybe Justin had some resources that may be sharing. And Randy also knew of potential services that could help train a public information officer, so we'll be following up on that.
Okay.
And I belong to a group of public information officers through the FBI, and I've already reached out to them because they have some additional... They have resources available for training through that group. And so those are folks that are already in that role, so hopefully they'll get back with some good training opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The bulk of our safety meeting that we had on the 31st was discussing the city manager's recommendation to close the dispatch center. So I'm going to turn this over to you now, and then so that you can review that, and then to Chief Neas for any other comments.
Okay, thank you. The decision to make this recommendation was not made lightly. It is hard on an emotional and human level. But as the research was conducted, information and facts gathered, and the pros and cons considered, it became apparent that my recommendation as city manager would have to be to consolidate with the sheriff's office. This issue is a multifactorial and complex one. But I also recognize that change is hard, change is difficult, but often change is necessary and warranted. First, I'd like to start with a little bit of history. In 2012, a performance audit was conducted by the Auditor States Ohio Performance Team, where they recommended that the city should develop a formal analysis of the potential for consolidating the dispatch operations with the Jogga County Sheriff's Office, the SO. The report indicated that by joining a joint dispatch center, the city could save money by reducing its dispatch costs. In May of 2014, city council agreed not to disband the dispatch center upon the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Various pros and cons of consolidating were discussed, but at that time, the city was the backup for the SO, and it was decided that that fact, coupled with other operational concerns, outweighed the advantages of consolidation and future cost savings for the city. Since that time, the national movement to support regionalism and consolidate public safety answering points, PSAPS, has continued. This trend towards consolidation is driven in large part by technological advances and staffing challenges, both of which are costly for small cities. Another factor driving consolidation is the increase in the number of 911 calls coming from cell phones. The majority of those calls go to the primary dispatch centers before being routed back to the secondary centers, as is the case here in Chardon, with the SO being the primary and Chardon being the secondary. Considerations. Some of the advantage of belonging to a consolidated dispatch center are, and most of these are brought about by economies of scale. Service improvements and efficiencies, which are designed to improve responses. Cost advantages by increasing buying power and decreasing the burden on individual municipalities and taxpayers. Opportunities to partner with regional, state, and federal organizations. It provides additional resources for professional services, equipment, and upgrades needed to operate modernized dispatch centers, including IT management. Having larger staff enables the SO to cover needed staffing and to plan for vacations, training, illnesses, and other absences. Requirements for the PSAPS continue to be more stringent. Some of the topics include continued professional training, new hire training and documentation, policy compliance, and technology compliance. It has become increasingly more difficult to stay in compliance. The cost savings will be provided to the city through savings on salaries, benefits, and operating costs. These cost savings will be used towards the addition of patrolmen and also for capital, equipment for the police department, such as vehicles, opticon system upgrades, citywide CCTV surveillance cameras, improvements at the parking lot to include carport for the police vehicles, weapon and optics replacements and upgrades, license plate reader cameras, and emergency notification system. And I could go on and on and on about the capital needs that the police department has, that this money could help fund. Some of the advantages of not belonging to a consolidated dispatch center are a perceived loss of personal service, a loss of operational control, changes to internal processes for additional duties that the dispatchers and patrolmen would now need to perform. There would be no need to modify the municipal center here where we sit, as it would continue to be staffed 24/7. And the lobby window would continue to be monitored 24/7 to assist anyone in a time of need. Research. As I stated earlier, this is a complex issue with many different factors to consider, both pro and con. Knowing that, I invited the Safety Committee Chair to participate with the background research. The research team consisted of the Safety Committee Chair, the Chief of Police, and myself. Meetings were held with various police departments to discuss the pros and cons of joining a consolidated dispatch center. The group spoke with the current Chief of Police and the retired Chief of Police in Highland Heights. And in Highland Heights, the city has opted to keep its dispatch center rather than pay to join a consolidated center. Both the current and retired chiefs in Highland Heights stated that the city residents love the service and that they have not had trouble funding or maintaining their dispatch center. This group also spoke with the Willoughby Hills Chief of Police. He stated that in 2018, they realized they couldn't afford to keep the dispatch center going and that they needed to join a consolidated dispatch center. Willoughby Hills does continue to have a law enforcement agency's data system terminal, which is referred to as LEEDs, and I would recommend that we keep our LEEDs terminal here as well. This terminal provides information about crimes, persons, and vehicles, and serves as a communication link from one location to another. The Chief of Police in Willoughby reported that the transition was an adjustment for the patrolmen, but that they've become familiar with the new process. The cost for their dispatch center services right now is approximately $290,000 a year, which, when taken into account, still provides their community a cost savings by going to the consolidated dispatch center. Additionally, the group spoke with the chiefs from Chester Township and Bainbridge Township. Both men expressed their belief that disbanding the dispatch operations and going with the SO was and continues to be beneficial for their operations and their residents. They have not had any significant issues with the SO dispatching for the communities and would do it again. Both of their operations were able to modify their buildings and their services during the transition. Chief Neas and I consulted with Sheriff Hildenbrand regarding dispatching for the city. Currently, the SO dispatches for the majority of the county. In addition to their own office, all the sheriff's office business, the SO dispatches for other police departments, all except for one, fire departments, and departments such as the Jogga Park District. The city calls would be absorbed into the overall operation without a need for an additional patrolman and at no additional cost to the city. This is in contrast to the model that I was just talking about being used in Kiahoga and Lake County, where they are paying to join the consolidated dispatch centers and have the annual fees. Facts. Why now? The city's equipment is over 20 years old and at the end of its useful life. This actually was the impetus for the analysis on whether or not to keep the dispatch center. For years, we've been talking about the need that this was coming down the road. But when we realized how expensive it was going to be, determined that we had to do an overall analysis. According to the 2012 recommendation, is it worth keeping in the city? Obviously, this equipment that we have is nine years older than it was when that analysis was made. So this led to a reassessment of looking at the new 911 call system, the dispatch consoles, workstations, mapping software, other infrastructure that's needed. Coupled with the fact that this technology is constantly changing, so you need to also factor in the fact that you're going to have to spend more money continually to update them. This all led to approximately $1 million that would need to be invested in the equipment. Being a small PSAP, the city receives a limited number of calls. Our phone call for 2021, we had incoming calls of 12,705, or 34.81 per day, of which 6,259, or 17.15 per day, were calls for service. And our total 911 calls, which were the landline... Landline calls come to the city, and we have one tower where a part of that tower comes to the city. So those calls totaled 820 for the year 2021, or 2.25 calls per day. The sheriff's office is already dispatching for the majority of the population of over 90,000 people in the county, but not for the city of Chardon, population 5,206, with a daytime population of around 13,700. Our staffing model. We have four full-time employees, and we use part-time employees to fill in when needed. This model does not work well. Part-timers work when they can, but most of them have full-time jobs. And on occasion, it has been very difficult to cover an open position at that center. At the Safety Committee meeting last week, the question was raised that if money were no object, what would a solution be for better staffing? At that time, I stated that one full-time dispatcher would be needed, but in fact, I was wrong. We would need one full-time dispatcher 24/7, so we'd need a total of four full-time dispatchers to have double coverage constantly, which obviously would double the amount of the personnel costs. The city of Chardon Dispatch salaries and benefit estimate for 2023 is $436,044, which does not include operational costs. So looking at a five-year projection from 2023 through 2027, using a 2.5% salary increase per year and a 2% benefit increase per year, which is going to be much higher than that, we know that, came to around $2,250,000 for that five-year period, or $450,000 every year. The city is not the true backup to the SO and is not designed to accommodate four positions which are needed to handle the call volume. Recommendation. It is my recommendation to close the dispatch center and transition to the SO for dispatching due to, one, the cost of upgrading the equipment at the center, and, two, the cost to stay up to date with the rapidly changing technology and personnel requirements; three, the personnel and operational savings; four, the city is not the true backup to the SO; and, five, currently, there would be no costs charged by the SO for dispatching. Initially, the long-term cost savings would be delayed due to the modifications we would need to this building, which we know we'd have to do. Also, consolidating the city's dispatch center with the SO will save significant personnel expenses, but it is recommended to city council that a new position be created to assume some of the duties that the dispatchers currently handle, such as issuing warrants, copying citations, handling administrative phone calls, and managing police records and files. The police department would be staffed with a records clerk positions Monday through Friday during business hours. A phone that will directly call the SO for use after hours would need to be installed in the vestibule outside. Further justification to recommend closing the dispatch center is the inability to secure grant funding for small PSAPS due to the initiative to consolidate dispatch centers. In 2021, the city applied for a community's project funding request from the Subcommittee of Commerce, Justice, Science, and Related Agencies for dispatch center upgrades. The upgrades were to cover the cost of dispatch consoles, the call-taking system, and miscellaneous equipment in the center. The estimated project cost was $900,000. The estimated project cost was $925,000, and the grant request was for 40% of that, or $374,000. The grant request was not successful. Being a small PSAP, we're at a very large disadvantage and actually not grant-eligible because the grant dollars are going to the large consolidated centers. The current dispatch center model is not sustainable given what is expected of PSAPs moving forward. Another overriding reason for the recommendation is that the level of service will not be affected. As many of the calls are currently taken by the SO and then transferred to the city, there will be no noticeable difference in the level of service for residents. Furthermore, should city council close the dispatch center, it is recommended that the full-time dispatchers that continue to work until the transition is complete be provided a financial incentive for their continued service to the city during the transition period. These and other benefits would be negotiated with the collective bargaining unit. In your packets, I also included a list of pros and cons from 2014, when the conversation first was held, and then those lists was updated in 2022, and a cost savings analysis as well. Cost savings analysis, clearly at the very top is what I already went through with the $2.5 million of the five-year projection. Assuming the new position is put into play, that's the next in the pink or gentle color with the increases, that was almost a half million dollars over the five-year period, which would still leave a savings of $1,759,928 before factoring in any of the costs to spend money on equipment. So that would be another $100,000 or $200,000 per year over that five-year period if you do it for a five-year period. I think I'll stop there.
Chief, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure, I got a couple things I want. First, I think it's important for council to know, and our dispatchers, many of them are here tonight, if not all of them, this is absolutely not their fault. Their dedication and their loyalty to this city is what's probably got us to this point. This probably should have happened long ago, and it probably would have, except for those folks and what they've done for the city. I say that because there's been many times, and we start with the equipment. Our equipment now is, it's 26 years old. Every year since 2016, as a part of the capital budget, I've discussed this, brought it forward. How we arrived here tonight and have come to this decision point started back last March. Every year, when I talk about part of the capital process, I've collected and gone out and got cost estimates for what it would cost each year. So in March of last year, I got a call from the county indicating that they were updating a piece of equipment, a very important piece of equipment on their end, that was going to represent a change in the mapping. It would cause us here on our end to have to also update our mapping. That change represented a $30,000 cost that wasn't budgeted for and wasn't expected. That would be applied, that mapping change would be applied to our existing council that's already 30 years old and that we know is an issue. So brought this to the city manager's attention, and I was directed to find out, so lock it down, let's find out exactly what it's going to cost to do this project and to get it done. So I did. I reached out. I started with operating from the perspective that we would remain the backup or remain a backup to the sheriff. So I asked various vendors to quote us three council positions with parity to the equipment that the sheriff has. The very first quote that I got back was $750,000 for just one piece of the equipment. It wasn't even a full project. Well, that's a lot. So I asked them to cut it back to two positions. Looked at that, that number wasn't much better. So then, we reached out to a couple of different vendors and we priced out different types of equipment. When we realized the overall expense, or when I realized the overall expense, I went back to the city manager and I described what we were looking at. At that point, we had a meeting with the sheriff. Hey, what does this, this is what we're looking at. And it was during the first meeting that we realized that the sheriff, the sheriff's office does not necessarily consider us their true backup, which, that allowed us to also look at single dispatch equipment that was a little bit more affordable for us, not necessarily giving us parity with those folks. Those estimates came back, and is November, in November of last year, I've got that first, that last quote back, came back at $550,000 for two pieces of the overall project. So that would be call works for 911 and a new council, radio council, what was known as AVTAC, to replace the equipment. That didn't, they didn't, those numbers didn't reflect the cost for labor to do the project, any aesthetics in the room, or the furniture. Believe it or not, dispatcher furniture is, the sheriff I'm sure can attest, is expensive as well. That's likely another $50,000 on top of what I've just described. At that point, so that took us into November. The other thing that we looked at closely was hosting, having the sheriff host our 911 service off of their server, and, which would allow us to piggyback off of their equipment by putting some equipment in here. Believe it or not, that turned out to be the most expensive option. So once the numbers were collected, I went back to the manager with that information, and it was at that point, we said it was important to talk to some other dispatch centers to see what they had done, starting with Highland Heights, because obviously, they had kept their dispatch center. We talked to, as the manager outlined, a number of other chiefs from agencies, both in Jogga County and out of Jogga County, about the pros and cons of doing this. So the equipment needs are very real. We were at a point last year where we had one set of buttons on one side that's our primary side, that we had to have communication services come in and switch sides of the council, so they're taking one side with the facing buttons and switching them out with the other side, which represents, to me, when I saw that happen and knew that's the position we're in, we're a 911 center, and you can't have that. We're at a point that that equipment has to be replaced, or we need to do something different. So that's on the equipment side. Now, on the personnel side, we've operated with four very dedicated, full-time dispatchers for a long time, but what has occurred is with part-time staffing, and we've got very good part-time staff, but their availability is not what we'd like it to be because all of them work at other agencies. So you become subject to their schedules at their different dispatch centers. And I don't have to go too far back to point out the challenges that we had during COVID, and when we got locked down, and a lot of those other dispatch, one of our part-time dispatchers were committed to their full-time agencies. So the long and short of it is that many times, dispatchers have been working long stretches, some as many as 10 and 12 and 13 straight 12-hour shifts, so that graciousness, so that the other dispatchers can get time off, but we've burned our staff out. We're continuing to burn our staff out. And then, on top of that, there were a couple of times last year that, just by the way the schedule fell, the coverage, we ended up with Lieutenant and Sergeant sitting in dispatch and trying to cover it because we didn't have a trained dispatcher to do that. So with that said, I recognize there's liability by doing that that we bring on. So we've come to a point here that we have, we had to look at alternative strategies, and consolidation is certainly one. If we're not able to replace the equipment and staff the dispatch center the way it needs to be staffed, consolidation is where we need to go. With that said, I know the sheriff is also here tonight, and I'm sure he's available to answer questions. This is difficult. It represents a substantial change to the way that Chardon has always done business. I don't, I can't remember a time in the history of Chardon Police Department where they didn't have a dispatcher or a dispatch center. So this is, this is very difficult decisions. On one side, it's very emotional, but on the other side, it's very practical. So here we are.
Thank you, Chief. Members of council have questions for either the city manager or the chief?
Okay, we're going to enter into a time here where the public has an opportunity to comment on this issue. You can come up to the lectern here, state your full name, the city you live in, and you'll be limited to three minutes, but please keep it to comment only. We will be taking notes during your comments, and at the end of all comments, prior to moving forward tonight, we may address those, but for right now, this will be comment time only. So whoever would like to come up first, the lectern is yours.
I might as well be the guinea pig. So I do this in three minutes. My name is Al Crowe. I'm from Russell, Jogga County, my whole life. First of all, I'm going to tell you this right now. Being a retired CPA, problem with the numbers. On the earnings reports provided by the city manager, he points out $100,000. It's totally inaccurate. W2 of this person is $53,000, not 100. He's duplicated vacation, holiday, and sick leave, which is already included in the W2. Now, further, we go back to the budget. Budget shows $107,000 for computerized legal research. We're right across the street from the district attorney's office. Why do we need $107,000 for that? What happened to the COVID money? All the COVID money that was granted to all the areas, everyone, Claredon, Russell, they all got COVID money. Per the state auditor, the word communications was included in the COVID money, the first round, was included. If you knew that the equipment was bad, why didn't you address that with the COVID money? That was the first round. You also got the second round of the COVID money. Okay? So whenever numbers are incorrect, you, as a group, have to look at all the numbers being incorrect. Okay? And there's other numbers that are incorrect. Listen, Medicare. W2 says one number, Medicare on this piece of paper from the city manager is a different number. I've eliminated the names of the person, so you don't know who it is, but the point being is, and you not talked about getting grants for the equipment, you've talked about getting grants for other things. I just have a major problem, there's other areas of money, okay? Human resources. How much time does a human resource actually use productive? These people back here are productive, every minute of every moment that they're paid for. Now, this gentleman, why don't you have this when you're doing your analysis? Have him do a time sheet of every 10 to 15 minutes. When I worked in public accounting for Ernst before I was retired, we did time sheets for every 10 minutes. So you take the people that work for the city, have them fill out time sheets to see who is productive and who is not productive. Your human resource officer, person, was in Florida answering phone calls on a beach, I rest my case, okay? The cemetery fund is costing $40,000 more than what you're taking in. I would look at that. I would look at the indigent driver alcohol treatment, that's costing you money. That shouldn't be costing you money. The person that's got the alcohol problem should be offsetting that. Now, I'm strictly by the numbers.
Give you a little more, just a few more seconds here, but get your three.
The bottom line is, there's $30,000 for a law library fund. Why? So there's money being spent in areas that should not be being spent, and I think that you need to address those areas before you attack people that are actually being productive, and get time sheets on people who are not productive, who are not really producing. And remember this, the bottom line, the last comment, if the numbers are incorrect over here, on this sheet of paper, and there's a bunch of them are incorrect, trust me, you cannot trust, from a CPA of over 40 years' experience, and yes, I am retired, but the bottom line is, if one number's off, they're all off. Do not trust the numbers. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Al.
And I apologize if I offend any of you. I'm an old guy, sorry. They do a great job.
Good evening, or good evening, you should say. My name's Jeff Allenby. I live in Chardon. Some of you I know, some of you know our family. Tough decisions, tough, tough, tough decisions, ones that aren't supposed to be taken lightly, obviously, for person-involved reasons. So tough, I actually wanted to reach out to some additional people. But before I get to, and that person in particular is my son. He's a police officer out in Wasworth, now a detective and part of the SWAT team out in Medina County. He said, "It's not a good thing to happen, Dad. It really isn't." There's so many aspects within the position for the patrolman that are critical to having a dispatcher, a local dispatcher there. And I want to make sure I stress that for the communications folks here from the county. He said, "Make sure you do, if you do anything else, make sure you compliment them. They've got a tough, tough job for as big as Jogga County is." But, so the way to think about it is twofold. One is the officers on the day-to-day operations, going from place to place, and having that extra set of ears that's local, that can identify not only with the tone and voice as much as where the person is, as to the nature of the stop, et cetera. He said, "On a patrolman's beat, that was critical." Which brings up a good point, Mr. Sharp. When you had your committee, it seemed like you chose not to include a patrolman on that. I may be mistaken, but I would think that if you want to get a good balance of information, that would probably have been a good thing when you're having those meetings, to be able to have that feedback back and forth. The other is the situation for our part of the position is the SWAT when you have an event. We'll call it that. A major thing to have happen. One of the big things to have when that occurs is you then have to defer to another system to cover either the rest of Jogga County or to be cued in just to that event. So the phone lines, are the phone lines, the radio lines are clear. In Jogga County, I'm not sure, but I believe the plan is that if there is a major event, if we were to go down this path, the backup system is then Lake County. So now you're trying to compete with, you're having Lake County manage the remainder of Jogga County during a major event. And when you have major events, you know, we all know what we've been through here in Chardon, you want to have those lines as clear as you can. So it's not, even though it's an economic decision, it's part of the nature of the beast. Final comments I want to say is this. We're changing in what the type of crimes, I'm sure Chief Neas can tell you. The crimes that we had, and if we look at this from when Mr. Sharp was suggesting, 2012, crimes have changed significantly. It's not going to get any better. Chardon is growing, but the days of people walking into dealerships and driving out with cars, walking into stores and walking out with carts full of merchandise, people having chases throughout their communities, that type of stuff didn't happen. At my own company, the one thing we used to, we've come up with a kind of a phrase to have within our company, and it's called "think beyond." Think is what you used to up until about 2020. Beyond is what you have to deal with ever since then. It's not the same world. It's not the same thing. In our business, we've had to change our policies and procedures significantly to try to cover for what wasn't what we thought of in the past. So I urge you in closing, two things. So I urge you in closing, two things. Think beyond in this decision, because once it happens, you can never go back. And two, I really encourage you, before you make the decision, to do a ride-along. I had the ability to do that with my son. Boy, you really want to have some insight into what they do and what the interaction is between dispatch and the officers, take advantage of it. I encourage every council person to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'm Kim Talarchik. I'm from Claridin. I just want to say, what is the main purpose of government? It's to protect your citizens. If you vote for this, you're not protecting your citizens.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy MacArthur. I live at 117 Cedar Glen here in the city of Chardon, and I was a longtime councilman and want to thank you all tonight for having this public forum to discuss this very important issue. I think I first heard about it through the newspaper and have since talked to a lot of different people all throughout the county, including some people in Baybridge Township, a former fiscal, pardon, the current fiscal officer and a former trustee, Lori Sospenza, who is now working in the police department. They, if you recall back, I believe it's been over 10 years when we did that performance audit, I was the person who initiated that on council, and the state auditor wanted us to take a look at that, and times are a lot different back then, but it was certainly something that we were considering eliminating. And I believe I was on the finance committee as well. And so, you know, I know what a tough job you all have up here. It's a very, very difficult decision to make, but in light of everything, I have talked to Chief Neos, extended conversations with him and our sheriff and other people, like I said, in the county. And having heard everything, I mean, certainly it wouldn't be a bad idea to do another performance audit. I don't know. We found a lot of other things that we saved money in, and some things we decided to change and other things we didn't. But, you know, it's, it's a good practice to do, and it's a balance between being responsible to the taxpayers who live in this city, who fund all of this. I think you heard some statistics from our city manager saying that our population can at least double, triple in a day from the people that work here. So we provide a lot of services for drive-through people and people that have businesses here but that don't actually necessarily, you know, pay taxes here. Certainly, the businesses do, but not all of the patrons do. We also pick up costs, which a lot of people aren't aware of, for the municipal court. And I'm glad to see that the county commissioners have, you know, maybe providing a little more money to that extent. So we do provide many services to the entire county, as well as the SRO for the largest school system in the county, which is Chardon Local Schools. We pick up that, almost that entire cost. So as stewards of the people who live here in Chardon and a very tough decision you have to make, I do support this. I, I think the numbers are probably pretty solid, and Randy, tell me if, did our finance director take a look at these numbers and, and help us come up with these numbers that you provided to us?
We'll answer when we get to respond.
Okay. So, I mean, I know the due diligence that the committee has done and that the people who are involved, and I know for Chief Neos in particular, it's a very, very difficult thing to have to tell some of your staff that we can't retain them and the positions that they are currently holding. And it is very emotional, it's tough, but I do want to support the council here tonight. I think, I feel safe in your hands, and I think you will make the right decision on what the taxpayers here expect you to do. So, and I would like that question answered about the finances. And again, if you want to do another performance audit, and that was brought up about other types of things that we're wasting money on, certainly feel free to do that. I know that the finance director we have now and Mac Gonskic, who we actually acquired through our form, our prior performance audit, he was on the team. So we were lucky enough to have him for a very long time, and I know the work that everyone does here, and it's, it's, I don't think we need to fill out a timesheet. I know what goes on here, and I know our people here work very hard. So I want to commend you all in making a very tough decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
My name is Lieutenant Brandon Reed. I'm the Communications Division Commander at the sheriff's office. And I didn't know until just a few moments ago that I was going to step up here and say some things, and certainly the sheriff doesn't know that I'm going to step up here and say a few things, but I feel compelled to do so. So if he wishes to fire me tomorrow, if that's his choice. But this, this carries a very personal note with me. I am not a law enforcement officer. I am a dispatcher by trade. I know what this job is. I know what these people sacrifice. I know what it takes to be good at this job. And there's a very human element to what's going on with these people, the sacrifices that they have to make. And I wanted to share a little story with my experience with the city of Chardon and, and my colleagues at Chardon Police Department Dispatch Center, where my heart breaks for them tonight because we're here to have this discussion, and I just hate when these things come down to money. And again, I'm going to share some opinion, and that's all it is, is my personal opinion. I'm not here to sway you in any way. We're not here begging for this, for this responsibility. We're not here trying to get you to agree to do this and let us have your dispatch responsibilities, but we are prepared to take on the challenge if necessary, and I believe we can do that just fine. But a little over a year ago, our, our county sustained some storm damage, and we lost our 911s for 22 hours. And it was because those 911s are designed to roll over to Chardon PSAP that we were able to continue that level of service for our residents of Jogger County. And without that, we would not have been able to do that. We would have been out of 911s for 22 hours. So my colleagues at Chardon Police Department stepped up and were there for us, and I wish to God we could find a way to keep that in place. I personally, and I shared this with the sheriff, so he knows that I feel this way about it, I personally wish we could keep Chardon as our, as our backup dispatch center. I know he's got an obligation to, you know, to pursue other avenues if this happens, but I want nothing more than to be able to keep our backup in Jogger County and come up here and work with our colleagues that we know, that know our systems. I know a lot of these people personally, professionally, of course, but personally. Amy, I'm going to throw your name out there. Amy Shaw is one of my favorite people on this earth. She used to work with us. These people sacrifice, and they're good people, they're hard workers, and when we've needed them in the past, they've been there for us. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Kloski, Wilson Mills in Munson. I'm one of the dispatchers here. Hi, Sheriff. Lieutenant, if you get fired, maybe I'll need a job coming up here shortly. Speaking for the dispatchers, okay, we are angered and hurt, not just by shutting down dispatch, but because of poor management at some level for not preparing or planning for the replacement of equipment, which is the cause of this shutdown. Poor planning by management is now affecting the families of four full-time and eight part-time dispatchers. Shutting down Chardon Dispatch not only affects those, those above, but also affects departments within the city, Chardon Municipal Court, Road Patrol Officers, the Fire Department, and other various entities. You may not be aware of it, but dispatchers who monitor the cameras have been responsible for noticing and reporting the following: trespassers on city property after hours, electronic door lock not working properly at the Heritage House, drug use at the Heritage House where a subject was cited for that, and other situations that go on here in the city. It's our opinion that proper prior planning and budgeting for the required upgrades should have been taking place for many years. These upgrades did not magically show up overnight. The notion of price increases should have been predicted and adjusted for since 2014. These upgrades were known well before the last three full-time dispatchers were hired. Hiring them knowing upgrades would be needed was a disservice to those who are now going to be left without a source of income. An example of magically showing up are items such as the fax machine, which still does not work properly to this day. This has been written up many times over the past several months, it still does not work properly. This should be unacceptable to someone, it's a basic fax machine. Mismanagement at some level also includes the payment of overtime in previous years. In a previous year, one dispatcher was paid over $400 hours of overtime. This was due to not having enough part-timers to cover the open shift. The argument will be, "Well, we could not get enough part-timers to apply." That is correct. It's difficult to get applicants with the rate of pay given to part-timers. If you would have taken some of the 400 hours of overtime that was paid to a full-timer and divided that amongst part-timers, you could have raised the hourly rate significantly where you could have taken part-time dispatchers from other departments to apply here. In conclusion, it's too bad, you know, because of mismanagement at some level, that the road patrol, citizens, courts, and us dispatchers and our families are going to be, have to burden, burden us. So I guess I say thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I guess I'll make a comment while the microphone is still alive. Bill Hess and I live on North Street in Chardon. I have listened to the law enforcement people on a, if you call it a scanner, probably more than all the rest of you put together, with the exception of the people that are actually in law enforcement, and have heard the, all sorts of various dealings that the sheriff, the city people, Fire Department, the State Patrol, all those people, all the different things that happen on a daily basis. And really, the only thing that comes to my mind is when it was decided in 2012 or whenever it was that the equipment was aging, and at that time, the city had decided that they did want to keep a dispatch center here, that somebody be set aside for replacing the stuff that needs to be replaced now in kind of an emergency situation in a timely manner, so that when this time came to pass, that the money would be already there to put toward it, and all that would have to happen is actually the pencil meet the paper, if you will, and get things rolling so that these purchases could be made, and the dispatching of all the various law enforcement and Fire Department people that has been done here, basically, I guess, since the city had two radios, can stay. So I, I, I would encourage keeping it here for all sorts of reasons.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Thank you to the Safety Committee. Thank you to Randy. Thank you to chiefs, sheriff, everyone involved with the research done over the last many months and weeks. And to restate that this is one of the most trying decisions we've ever had to make, all I've been on council is, is accurate. We have a slew of things that were discussed at this point, but I think what we'll do is, Heather, if you want to make a motion, we can get into discussion at that point.
I'll make the motion to approve the manager's recommendation to terminate the collective bargaining agreement with the dispatchers and to authorize the manager to negotiate a closing agreement with the bargaining unit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion. So at this point, we can talk about some of these topics that were presented tonight. And I'll, I'd like to bring up the first one, if that's okay. And that was, a comment was made that approving this, this measure means that we are not doing what we can to protect the people visiting, living here, and the businesses. And I've heard nothing but comments involving the, the security of the way we're proceeding, the cooperation with the sheriff's office. In addition to that, funds that would be realized in savings can be generated to be used in law enforcement capacities, which can in fact aid our current team of law, of law enforcement professionals. I wanted to bring that up, and I'm sure there's others, so whoever would like to. Randy, I think, if you would mind answering Nancy's question about whether Mark had a chance to review the finances.
Yeah, actually, the data that started this analysis came from the former finance director, Matt Gonskic. The data most currently being used was provided by the deputy finance director for the numbers that are in your packet. And actually, I think in the Excel spreadsheet that I gave you, there's an asterisk that says 2021 full-time average earnings was $54,085.75. It's the benefits of $34,867.50 that goes onto that to make the total.
I'd like to address a comment that was made about the financing for this. So as we've been looking for this, the cost to update the dispatch center, as it's been stated, is somewhere close to $1 million to the physical and the hardware and the software to update the dispatch center. However, we got here, we're here today, and so we have to decide, do we invest $1 million of taxpayers' money into updating the dispatch center? Currently, Chardon taxpayers are already paying for dispatching service through the sheriff's office. As was stated during the Safety Committee, 90% of the fire and EMS calls right now are already dispatched through the sheriff's office. Is that correct? About 90%? Right?
No, it's not.
Well, that's coming from...
Maybe 911, but not other calls.
Right, 911.
But the, right, so the majority of the 911 calls.
It's fax.
Okay, my apologies. But Chardon taxpayers are already paying for that. If we ask the taxpayers to come back and ask them for $1 million to update the dispatch center, which does not include any of the personnel costs, we're basically asking them to pay for something twice. That feels like an undue burden on taxpayers. That does not count if, in three years after we did, we did that update, if there was a mandate for us to then, again, upgrade the software. With the current price of the software, you know, if we get a $25,000 bill, then now we have to update again. And yet, what has been stated is that we don't have a high enough volume to also justify having more, having more staff there. So we have a staffing model that's not working, we have equipment that's outdated. So when you're talking about, and we're not eligible for any grants, so we cannot get grant money for this, and so we do, and have to go back to our taxpayers and ask them to do this. So it's not that this isn't like incredibly hard, and I get that that's not a, you know, any, that doesn't mean anything to the folks who are being affected by this, but this is a 10- or 20-year decision that we're making. Do we invest this money? Do we ask taxpayers to do this? And so for me, it feels like an undue burden on our taxpayers to ask them to pay for something that they don't have to spend that money on.
The state auditor said you never asked for any grant money.
Well, sir, if you're, sir, we have asked for grant money. We have. And the other point I'd like to address, we're not the backup for the sheriff's office. That has been very clearly stated to us multiple times now. We're not the backup. So how do we justify spending that money on additional staff if we're not the backup?
Could you be?
No.
We're just going to, Jeff, just...
So, I mean... So, I mean, no one feels good about this. No one's happy about this. I mean, this is a situation, we have to make a decision based on what we have right now before us.
Could anyone else from council want to address any of the concerns that we heard this evening?
Well, a statement was made that the residents of Chardon are going to be less safe. I'd like to hear the chief address that.
So the residents of Chardon should not recognize any type of a change in the way that their calls are answered. The sheriff's dispatch center performs the same types of functions that our dispatchers do. So if you dial 911, or you call the non-emergency line, it'll be answered, and you'll get a timely response. What our officers will recognize, that it won't be our dispatchers answering their radio traffic, it'll be sheriff's office dispatchers. But that in and of itself does not make them any less safe, it's just a change in how we operate. And it's a substantial change. It's going to be something that we're going to have to get used to if you choose to go down this path.
Can you address the concern about major events that were brought up and how those are handled, like how we handled them this last year?
Sure. Obviously, there's major events that are planned, and then there's major events that happen. So the response to that, you know, obviously, when you have the advantage to plan for an event, obviously, communications piece is always a key element of your planning. So just like in the event that we were to have, you know, the Maple Festival every year, we would plan to address that communication need for us. And that certainly would happen if we're working out of our own dispatch center, or whether we're working out of the sheriff's dispatch center. Obviously, those conversations would be had as we're in the planning process. Now, in an emergency situation currently, obviously, we have, in the current model, is you have one dispatcher that's in the dispatch center, especially after hours. After 6:00 PM, there's one dispatcher. During the daytime hour, currently, there's one dispatcher and one records clerk currently. At any given time, you know, you go into the dispatch center, they may be involved in two or three different phone calls, and especially if it's something going on. Let's say, I'll use it for a point of discussion, let's say that it's a structured fire of some type that may require multiple fire departments to respond. We have one dispatcher on our end that might be getting multiple calls related to that, plus trying to manage the radio traffic for those fire units, plus those phone calls. Under the model that's proposed, that same call, if it were to go into the sheriff's office, they have a group of dispatchers that are present there. Now, I'm not taking away from the efforts of our dispatch center currently, but really, when an emergency happens, they don't really have a roomful of dispatchers there to help them, in the same way that maybe Randy could speak to as far as what the sheriff's office has. We've gotten by, and our dispatchers do a great job. There's also times currently now that when we have something going on, that the sheriff's office, the sheriff's dispatchers do help us. So for example, we had a structured fire at the Autobody Place on Water Street here, this last year, Car Star. That particular night, Amy Shaw was in dispatch by herself. Her counterparts at the sheriff's office helped her by paging mutual aid. Anytime the Mavis box gets dropped, as the fire chief could address, brings multiple units in. Well, they worked as a team and helped support Amy, who's sitting in the room there by herself.
Can you address also, because he mentioned this, like SWAT, like the partnership that we have with other agencies in some, when we have some kind of event?
Sure. We definitely have an ongoing and working relationship with the sheriff's office, who can provide us and has provided us with a variety of resources, everything from deputies that respond with us, to detectives that come support us. They have the ability to draw in their folks that are assigned to a SWAT team. But we also belong to the Valley Enforcement Group, which is a collective body of 16 agencies that also provides support to us, that includes SWAT, hostage negotiations, a drone team, a child abduction response team slash missing persons response group, and has provided us manpower for events that we've had. So we definitely have the ability to draw resources in an emergency.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, is the one that said that? Just real quick, when I said the term events, I was trying to figure it out a little bit because it's February. It meant unexpected events. Is that understood?
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, if I could say something that doesn't directly address comments that were made? Is that right? I looked at this, my main focus in my mind has been the presence of somebody in this building around the clock. Not so much dispatching, but a presence in the building. I truly believe that the sheriff's office could handle the dispatch aspects of this due to not only, I mean, we've mentioned the cost, we've mentioned the staffing problems, but we, I, when I've looked at this, and I've looked at the proposed new position, which would be days during the week, I question in my mind, is that going to be enough? Are we going to find that we really need to expand those hours? I've talked to Randy, I've talked to the chief, I've talked to the chief quite a few times in the last week with what about this, what about that, how would you handle this call, that call? As the dispatchers here know, I have called quite often myself on non-911 issues that I thought needed attention. I may be unique in that, but I see things out in the community, and I call because I think it should be done. I've told both the chief and Randy that I expect, as they, if we go forward with this, and we go through a transition period, and it's going to be a transition, no question about it, there's a number of issues that we don't have answers for yet, exactly how it's going to be handled. I'm confident that that will be done, and I'm quite confident that we can do that one way or another. But I've told both gentlemen that I expect that if they find that those hours needed for that new position need to be expanded, council wants to know that. I do not want either one of them, not saying that they do it, but I don't want them to say, oh, I'm not going to go to council because I told them that days only will be enough. If it isn't, we need to know that. Because I think that's important. This community has had people at the station for years. That, to me, is a, to me, that is a bigger change in a lot of ways, and that could just be my perception of an older person who's been around a while. But the actual dispatching, I think, when a citizen calls on 911 or something, they don't know where that call's going. They assume it's coming here, but a good percentage of the chance it isn't. So I just wanted to bring that up, that I think we have to keep an open mind in terms of what we think that position has, how it has to be staffed, and during what hours. And not automatically assume it's just going to be days during the week. Now, if we have to expand that, that's going to cut into our savings. I understand that. But if that's what we need to do to service this community, that's what I think we need to do. So I just wanted to bring that part up. Very few have mentioned that at all, but I think it's an important part to keep in mind.
I'll agree with Councilman Loco. I think that is an important consideration, more than just mere savings, that if we can, if, expanding beyond business hours nine to five weekdays, that we definitely include weekends, and be open to the idea that maybe we have to have somebody here on a night shift. So it becomes more than just a matter of, I think that the dispatch calls being handled at a central location, I concede the justification for that. But I'm also, as Councilman Loco is, am also concerned about making sure that we have, we provide some basic service to the community, that they feel confident that when they call or come into, through the doors here, that there's somebody here to help them.
Thank you, both of you. Any other comments from council, or clarifications on what we are...
Well, Lieutenant Reed mentioned that it'd be nice if, this could be the backup, but I guess that would require a very significant amount of investment, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we just, that's probably beyond the funding you've already looked at, correct?
Yes, sir. And that also would also involve the, a commitment from the sheriff that he wants us to be that backup.
Correct.
Dan, I asked that question specifically at the Safety Committee meeting?
Yes.
And the information I was given, if I'm not mistaken, was that the county is not looking to come here as us as a backup.
Okay. And I guess, just as a clarification, and maybe, I don't know if the sheriff would mind answering this question, but you're confident you could handle the load that comes in through our, for our emergency services?
Yes, I wouldn't have offered it if we weren't...
I'd rather hear it tonight, and just straight from you.
And what I told Mr. Loco was that, you know, we would love to use this as a backup, but you're going to have to upgrade all your equipment to make it work.
Understood.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I went down to see the sheriff's dispatch center on Tuesday, and they had three full-time dispatchers then, and then, so we just have the one. But there's, you have councils for, is that right? Okay. And so, going back to asking the taxpayers to make this feasible, would we have to put a levy on?
I believe that we would have to put a levy on if we were to try and fund the whole project. I don't know if I can answer that.
Depending on what council would like to do. If council were interested in spending upwards of $1 million on equipment, that can be done. It's not just the equipment, it's all the things together. You have to take the whole piece together and go, okay, well, we need equipment, but we also need stamping. And can we justify, can council justify spending taxpayer money for the limited number of calls we have and have two people sitting there 24/7? Does that make sense? If that's a yes from the majority of council, then we need to step back and re-pronounce some numbers, and either go for a levy, or cancel a whole bunch of projects that we had planned to do, that we were going to use general fund money for.
Randy, if we were to do a levy, when's the soonest, when could that happen?
The earliest one would be November, and I don't know what the deadlines are to get everything.
Right, right.
It would be in August.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, we do have a motion that was made and seconded, and we are now to the vote. So Amy, please call the roll.
And is this to expand the dispatch?
Recommendation to terminate the collective bargaining agreement with the dispatchers and authorize the closing agreement with the collective bargaining unit. Mr. Bra?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
All right, we're going to move on, then, to agenda item number eight, hearing of persons before council. And we have Steve Turpin here tonight from Chardon Brew Fest. And Steve has a guest, so come on up and introduce yourselves.
First of all, thanks for giving us your time tonight. I'm here as project manager for Chardon Brew Fest, and with me is Angela Nagel, who is the event manager for Cleveland Scene Magazine. We'll get into more detail about that shortly. But first, I want to do two things. I'd like to give you a review of what happened last year with the event, and then talk mostly about what we propose going forwards for the event 2023. The attendance was something over 1,400 folks, I don't have an exact number, I think that was a record. There were 27 brewers, 54 beers, three bands, three local restaurants, including Pulp Bowl from Willoughby. Some geographic data is in the package, and I hope you all have, it gives a breakdown of where folks came from for the event. I think it's a compelling story to say that the event's getting more and more popular, and not just in good old Chardon. I think in November, roughly, I sat down with Chief Neus and Lieutenant Lisa, and reviewed security and safety performances on the event, and talked over some issues that we could improve upon. The thrust of tonight's meeting, or my presentation, our presentation, is to seek new event ownership in that Great Lakes race timing. The previous owner has gone out of business, and hence, a new owner is required. Some progress that's already been made, and the hope and expectation that we are going to proceed in 2023, is that permits and forms, permits and forms have been submitted, sponsors are already being, are calling on us to return, guests are calling about seeking tickets, and Scene Magazine is reviewing the city agreement that we had in 2022 for the event. The proposed new ownership for this year would be that I would assist in transitioning Great Lakes timing away, obviously, and moving in Scene Magazine, a little bit of history. Scene Magazine is the owners and managers of the Tremont Ale Fest, which has been around since 2008. It's a quite a bit larger event than ours, and they assisted, actually, in the startup of Chardon Brew Fest back in 2012. There's no intent to affect the location of the event, the date of the event, the relative date, which is the second Saturday in August, and, or the overall event character. Don't anticipate any, or little to no effect on the guests, or the community for that matter. And like I say, I intend to assist in the, this transition from one order to another this year. The advantages I see are pretty clear. Due to Scene Magazine, if you're familiar with it, they're very prolific on their website. They're a well-known publication in the Cleveland area, which will lead to wider geographic exposure for the event, which should cause growth, in my opinion. They have the resources to, through their magazine, social media platforms, weekly newsletters, their website, and then through other partners, media partners in the city. There's the obvious Tremont Ale Fest experience that they have. The intent is that we're going to incorporate their best practices that they could bring to the table. And the intent is for Scene Magazine being the long-term owner and manager of the event. I really believe this will afford a pretty seamless project management transition. Angela and I will be a team this year, and we'll go forward from there. I really also believe that the key volunteers and players will remain the same for the event. So I'd like to pass it on to Angela to give you an overview of Scene Magazine and who they are.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. Scene Magazine's been around since 1970, and since then, it started as a music magazine and has evolved into a full entertainment, what's happening in Cleveland and surrounding areas. When I started in 2012, we, you know, I came in, and we had three events, and we've grown to have around a dozen events every year. But in that, we were really looking to expand our platform and to expand our reach to a little bit more outside of downtown Cleveland, which is luckily why I got a chance to talk to Steve about the Chardon Brew Fest. We have done the Scene Ale Fest in Tremont, like you said, since 2008. It's grown, and we, every year, are looking to make it better. With coming into the Brew Fest, the Chardon Brew Fest, we're not really looking to change anything. We want to make sure that we keep the event good, because Steve's done a great job with it in the past years, but then also to support it and see if there's any ways that we can help, and obviously, to expand the platform and the reach to people outside of Chardon, including, including Chardon. We have done events not only in Tremont, we've done events, obviously, in the city of Cleveland, but then in Willoughby, and other surrounding communities, in the Flat East Bank. And I have personally enjoyed working outside of downtown Cleveland. I really look forward... I really look forward to the possibility of working with you guys and, and meeting and introducing myself to everybody.
So I thought before we go into Q and A, assuming there is some, um, the point, the point tonight for us is that if there's a vote required by City Council, I don't know for sure if there is one needed. If there is one needed, I'd like to get it tonight, uh, because we're behind the eight ball. Uh, last year, we started selling on Black Friday, so we're easily two months behind, no fault of anyone's. Uh, um, and we'd like to get ticket sales going as fast as possible, so, uh, that's what we have.
Steve, I know that you met with, with, uh, after the last event, and Chief, were you satisfied with any recommendations that you had moving forward that they would need to be made aware of?
Yes, sir. I think, um, we had a very robust meeting, uh, Lieutenant and myself both, uh, thought the event, um, we've got a good working relationship with Steve, and I think that, uh, moving forward, uh, I don't see any difficulties working with him, and, you know, he's been receptive to our suggestions regarding safety of the event, as well as the number of staff that we need to have available, and he understands that, uh, our, um, what we can bring to the table, so I think, uh, I don't have any, uh, concerns about moving forward.
Does anyone else have any questions for Steve or Angela?
Uh, so you mentioned that, um, you expect Scene Magazine to be the long-term owners? Um, what exactly, can you just identify some things you're gonna do for expected growth, or how you're gonna handle it, like specifically? Like, uh, because, you know, they always seem to be very well-attended, so there's a lot of people there.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure that being able to adjust for and handle that, that amount of people.
Yeah. If I could speak for us both for a moment, um, having laid out the, uh, the footprint of the event every year, um, last year we expanded it, and I could tell, yes, we were well-packed, but we weren't incredibly so. And we still have room to move, I would say, south a little bit, uh, by avoiding the occult of Sacred Monument off to the left. Um, so, um, yeah, we have room to move and to grow, and I don't think we've reached maximum capacity yet, but there's gonna be a limit, no, no doubt in my mind. And what is it, 2,000? I don't know. I, I, I wish I could give you that answer, but I'm not gonna make something up.
Okay, fair enough. Last year, I did ask Steve to submit any data relative to where people are coming from that enjoy the event, and that's in your packet, I'm sure you've, interesting that Chardon is number one, but Cleveland's number two on where folks are coming from, so we are pulling from a, a long, a long distance, and I appreciate you putting that together, Steve, so.
Sure.
Uh, there is a, an agreement, right? Randy, we have an agreement that would need to be retrofitted for Scene Magazine, correct? And it's on here, according to yours, Steve, that you're already reviewing the agreement?
Just for the purposes of knowing what they can, are getting themselves into, if you follow me.
Okay. So, when would that agreement need to be in place if you're gonna start selling tickets?
Gotcha.
Uh, you said you want to start selling tickets relatively soon?
Honestly, um, if we're doing it within a week, we'd be happy with that.
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we don't have an signed agreement, though?
No.
At, at present. Uh, what status is agreement in with you now, Angela?
I mean, to be completely honest, it's, we were hoping to, to essentially duplicate the, the same agreement. We were, we're so far fine with it, um, we just have our legal team kind of reviewing, but other than that, it, it seems to be no, no problem.
Okay, so, Ben?
So procedurally, if council wants to move forward, they can pass a motion authorizing city manager to execute whatever agreement the parties reach, which will likely be substantially similar to what they've passed in the past. There's no expenditure of municipal funds, there's no issues, city manager's within his authority to sign it, he should even be a blessing, though.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Did you get that motion, Amy?
General contact.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
No.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so they'll work that with you, and then, when that's signed, you can proceed with selling tickets as planned, and stay in touch. Really, the communication can't be stressed enough between Scene, of course, Steve being involved is a huge asset. I, Angela, I think you probably know that, but...
Yeah, he's amazing.
I think he probably has a tattoo somewhere that says Brewfest.
I think I got a T-shirt on.
Yeah. Uh, but his, his organization is, his, uh, his, uh, his leadership has been greatly appreciated over the years, so.
Having been involved when it was under Chardon tomorrow, a few years ago, the most, one of the most important things you need to be aware of and be concerned about is cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Yes.
That is major. And it will take people, everybody walking the square, after you think it's cleaned up, to make sure it is cleaned up.
Yep.
So, I just throw that out there because I personally am a...
Dave, we have a coordination meeting set up for June 7th, where we'll go through the entire outline, we'll go through the, uh, site plan that, uh, Brewfest provides each year, and we'll have police presence there and, uh, city staff, and we'll coordinate all that with, uh, Steve and Scene.
I know the chief likes to get an idea of what, how many guests are gonna show up, so we try to keep chief updated on a, sort of a monthly basis, here, here's where we're at, so.
That's really important for us, as well as the fire department, is, and we try to track the attendance, so Steve's been really good about keeping us updated, so.
A lot of times, there's an event the next day on the square.
Yep.
So that has to be ready for the next one.
I personally get there about 8:00 on Sunday morning, 'cause it's hard to see as it's getting dark, and I start picking up little pieces of paper and, yeah.
I'll be right there with you, sir.
Okay, Stephen, Angela, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, any other comments from general, the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to new, old business? Any old business? No? New business, yes. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Joga Soccer Federation, and Adam, you're gonna bring us up to speed on this.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So essentially, this agreement will allow the Joga Soccer Federation to manage our youth soccer league for the 2023 seasons, so spring and fall. Um, they will have full management, control over scheduling, games, coaches, and, uh, coach training. As of right now, the city is still taking registration. Uh, we will be making purchases also this year for the soccer league, and then, um, at the end of the season, whatever money is collected will be split 50/50 between Chardon Soccer Federation and the city of Chardon. There's a number of benefits I can get into for doing this, if you would like to hear them. If not, I'm open to any other questions.
I have a question about the relationship, so let's say, parents or guardians have a complaint about something relative to the soccer program, who are they voicing that to, and would you be made aware that there was an issue from the, the league?
Yeah, so, the initial complaint would go to the board that is over top of the Recreation Division of the Joga Soccer Federation, and if it's not resolved within the board, then it would be reported to me, um, to handle. Even if it is resolved at the board, I would get a report of that issue and discuss it with the Joga Soccer Federation.
Is this still gonna be a Chardon recreation program?
It is. It's, it's labeled as in partnership, Chardon Rec, recreational soccer in partnership with Joga Soccer Federation. Their interest in this is, in the past, they've been strictly travel. They're running it the same as REC, uh, they're not changing the format of any of the program, but what it's gonna do for them is they're gonna get a good look at the younger players, and as they get older, they'll be able to develop them the way that they want them developed by the time they reach that travel age. And then it also provides a feeder, they provide a feeder to the Chardon school soccer program. I think last year, the Joga Soccer Federation, uh, gave, I don't know if gave's the right word, but provided, it was like 13-something kids from their travel league to the school. So it, it turns it into a feeder program at a younger age, instead of catching kids at 13 that are playing travel, and then going to the school to play.
Sounds good. I just, the comment I had about a complaint coming through, I think your answer was, it would only get to you if the complaint was not resolved, is that, am I stating that correctly?
No, it would definitely get to me if the complaint was not resolved.
Right.
But I would get report on it if it was resolved.
You'll know either way.
Correct.
Just to stay in touch with the, uh, the families that are participating.
Yeah, and especially for this first year, we will be communicating a lot, especially since we are taking registration and doing the purchasing for the league, so there'll be a lot of communication back and forth between me and them.
I'm just gonna put this to a vote, right, Amy? Okay, is there any other questions for, for Adam?
So part of the perspective, for those that don't know, what, what does this, how does this benefit Chardon REC and particularly your position with Park and Rec?
It benefits Chardon REC in a number of ways, one way being that they have more board members and volunteers to help direct the coaches, the volunteer coaches, and spend more time on coaching strategies for the younger kids. They have more staff, we'll call them, um, even though they're probably volunteers, that can dedicate themselves to each division, instead of one person trying to manage all the divisions and all 300 children. So more hands, more bodies, more help. Um, it helps the Recreation Department, because it's still recognized as our youth soccer league, we're not giving the program away. Say next year this contract goes away, we will still be running the youth soccer program. So we're not giving the program away, that's one benefit. Uh, the other benefit for us is, honestly, it gives me a little bit more time to focus on some of the other leagues that we run, and make those, uh, run a little smoother.
I would say, I, I know one of the folks who's involved, and was involved from the very beginning, and they have real passion for trying to develop the soccer program, like, that's the whole goal, is to develop the soccer program in the city of Chardon. I mean, that's, so...
Yeah, we met with the gentleman last year during the Park and Rec meeting, and, and that's, that's the key, is you said passion, these are people that are really gonna try to help develop and give the kids the experience that they need, so I see it as a good thing.
Are we paying any of those people at all?
No.
Are we paying anyone to be involved with the soccer program?
Payment, no, but they are receiving, uh, revenue, 50/50 revenue, after all expenses.
Okay. But right now, if this goes into effect, nobody from their organizations on our payroll?
Correct.
Anything else for Adam? Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Joga Soccer Federation?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means? Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Thank you, hope that goes well, Adam.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 10, New Business B, consider authorizing the city manager to participate in public auctions for the purpose of purchasing a used boom mower. Paul?
That's me, thank you. Um, in your packet, you'll see a number that I drafted that thoroughly outlines what we're gonna talk about, and I apologize in advance, I'm, a little bit of chest congestion this evening. Excuse me. Currently, we have a 1973 Massey Ferguson burn mower that's used four to five, maybe six times per year to do, uh, burn mowing throughout town. Over the past four or five years, we've tried to identify and earmark some funds to perhaps purchase a used machine. Um, the new machines are in excess of 200, $225,000. I can't justify a piece of equipment that's used less than a dozen times a year, uh, for that type of money, so it's always been our goal is to try to find a used piece of equipment. A few weeks ago, I happened upon an equipment, uh, auction, and I saw such a machine, and it sparked the conversation between the city manager and I, uh, as to whether or not we can purchase on, via, uh, an auction, uh, public or, um, private. Uh, with the assistance of the law director, um, we were able to find a provision in the, uh, codified ordinances that allows the city manager to partake in, and his designee to partake in an auction, uh, for such items. Um, our intent is to, uh, obviously, at least try to save half of that brand-new cost on a, on a similar machine. Um, the particular machine that I saw is still, uh, available, it's out of Pennsylvania. They do come around periodically, some are good, some are not so good, uh, but we've not had the opportunity to go ahead and partake in these auctions until now. Um, I fully understand that if we do find such a machine, uh, we're hoping to obviously save a, a, a great deal of money pursuant to purchasing a new one, but also that something else that's already approved in the capital budget would have to be put off until future years, so, uh, for that reason, uh, I am seeking a motion from, uh, council to allow the city manager to participate in public auctions and for the public purpose, public purpose, for this particular instance, for a boom mower, and, excuse me, um, I'm asking for a, not to exceed number of 120,000. I'll try to do much better than that, but at this point, that would seem, uh, if we could save half on such a machine, and, and the machine still be, have some useful life, um, we've gotten, like I said, ours is a 1973, so we've gotten, you know, almost 50 years out of that, so I think we can make a new one work for a long period of time as well.
So just to clarify, you don't have one today, or you do have one today that you want to bid on?
There is one that we're, that we're following.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
No, no.
Throughout the course of the, we, we saw, uh, they, they come and go, they come either in lots of multiples of, you know, 10, where, you know, a whole, you know, a whole, uh, public entity is changing out their fleet, or they come up individually. Up, up until this point, we've just been looking and trying to gauge what they go for. We looked at one from the Joga Park District, we chose not to participate in that one because it was, it was probably past its useful life.
So if you were to bid on one of these, you would go and look at it first?
Correct.
Check it out, have it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have our, we would have our mechanic and, uh, foreman and/or superintendent, uh, from the Streets Division go and, and look at it, and look at records and, and so on, maintenance records and...
Okay.
So this would be the tractor and the mower?
Yeah, I provided a picture in the, in the back of it, it's, it's, that's the actual one that caught my attention, um, and so that, you know, obviously, it has a tractor, it has the boom protruding off the right side of the machine, counterweights and, and that on the, uh, left-hand side of the machine, and, um, it, it could be used for other items, but to pull that bulky attachment off is not something that you do regularly, so...
Is that a, all of those towers?
That is a Massey Ferguson as well. Uh, we've also, I, I might want to mention that we've tried to do this with the county, we've tried to look at other regi, like, um, utilizing other, uh, communities' equipment, and it just, it doesn't seem to work, because they wanna send their people to us, and that's, it just hasn't, it hasn't come into fruition yet.
So it's not an item that we put in the capital, because it's a if-come, maybe? Even if council approves this, and, and Paul says, "Yeah, let's go after that one," it's very, very possible we're not gonna be a successful bidder.
True.
So we'd like to get authority to make it happen if we can... So we'd like to get authority to make it happen if we can, recognizing that we'll have to massage the capital that is in the Street Department for that time.
But also not just for this machine. If we're not... If we don't get this one, at the end of this year, we may see another one or a group come through that we'd like to bid on. And so this allows us the... It allows Randy the authority to do so from this point forward.
So all these mowers are generally used, like on Water Street or places where there is like a ditch line and it's not being mowed by the property owner?
Correct. Yeah. Clarion, Wilson Mills. We burn mow all over town, but it's intermittent.
Is it something that you could use on the Maple Highlands Trail?
It is something we could use on Maple Highlands Trail. And it's also something that I've since kind of getting more involved in this. There is an attachment that can be used for snow blowing to perhaps get snow away from fire hydrants, where we have a real difficult time getting residents or business owners to do that for us. It could also help... And I'm saying that's just a possibility to... I try to find equipment that has uses in every season. And so obviously, this is pretty limited to just the growing season, but there are attachments that they make that help offset that expense, so you can use it in winter as well. And if we're able to find something that's reasonable, then we'll put something like that into the capital for consideration in future years.
Any other questions for Paul? Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to participate in public auctions for the purpose of purchasing a used boom mower?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for...
Thank you.
... search. Agenda item number 11, legislation. A, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion? Read this by title only for the second and third time.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Resolution number 5-23. A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency. Resolution number 5-23. A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 5-23?
Still moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Randy?
This is a priority project that was identified by a CT study in 2020, which was the water model update. It will provide new water mains from Hidden Glen subdivision to Woodybrook Road and create the loop, which will increase safety of the water system. It will also help improve water quality. The project cost is $800,000, $800. The grant that we'll be receiving is $250,000 and a 0% 20-year no-interest loan of $150,000. So $400,000 would be coming from...
OPWC.
From OPWC. I was thinking Noack, Nopec. OPWC. And then the balance would be city funds.
And so this is the loop that addresses the... When the Woods of Burlington lost water a few years... Is that what this is?
It creates redundancy to feed the water tower in the event that the 16-inch transition main is breached. Yes.
It's really more important for the rest of the city.
Well, that too.
Years ago, this classic story is they lost a water main there at the Culver on South Street, and the entire city was... Didn't have water supply, other than what was in the standpipe.
Randy, other questions for Randy? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Agenda item 11B, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
Amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion? Read this by title only for the second and third time. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3232. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3232. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3232?
Still moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have before you an amended appropriations ordinance for your review and consideration, which is explained as follows. Section 1, the increase of $70,000 in the general capital improvement fund budget for lands and buildings is due to the emergency replacement of a boiler unit, approximately $14,000; fire alarm system, approximately $25,000; to rebuild building structure, approximately $31,000 at Old Village Hall as a result of the frozen and broken boiler lines that were found during the emergency service call that resulted in an insurance claim. Section 2 is also part of this. The increase of $8,000 in the general fund budget for lands and buildings is due to the mitigation costs related to the insurance claim at Old Village Hall. And again, since this is an insurance claim, all but $10,000 will be reimbursed. $10,000 is a deductible for property insurance.
Out of the $78,000, you're saying?
Yes.
Are there any questions for Mark? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Chuha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, expenditures. Dan?
Yes. Andy himself and Kyle joined us Saturday, and we had a lot of fun reviewing expenditures, gave Mark a bunch of questions, and they were all answered satisfactorily. So they are in order.
Kyle? Attracted due to that.
I wanted to learn what the expenditures were and see the process. And Mr. Molesky and Mr. Blackley were very patient with me, and I do appreciate their help with that.
He helped us.
And I learned a lot, so I appreciate that.